All right, welcome everyone. I'm Richie Ratzak, the Assistant Managing Editor at The Record Journal. We're back again with another candidate forum this afternoon, joined by the candidates from Area 1 in the Meriden City Council race. We have incumbent Democratic Party candidate Yvette Cortez and Roberto Gonzalez, who's cross endorsed by the Republican and We the People parties. So the format will be like previous candidate forums where each candidate will get a one-minute opening statement, and we'll ask a series of questions, and each candidate will get one minute to respond, and we'll alternate who answers first, and I can give additional time at my discretion. Questions, some of the questions came from the newsroom, and others came from our Voices Initiative, where we asked voters what they want the candidates to be talking about as they compete for their votes. For those watching on Facebook Live, I'll also be keeping an eye on the comments. So if you have a question for the candidates, leave it in the comment section, and we'll try to get to them as time allows. So with that, we'll get into opening statements, and we'll go in the order in which candidates appear on the ballot. That Cortez will go first.
Thank you. So my name's Yvette Cortez. For those who don't know me yet, I am currently a city councillor representing Area 1. I do so very proudly. I have lived in Meriden virtually my entire life. My mother and father raised me here. They, my mother was raised here. My father came over as a very young adult, and they grew to love this city, and they raised their children here. We were educated. I'm a graduate of Platt High School, and I moved away for a few years in my early twenties, and I have been back in Meriden for several years now as a single mom raising two young kids. My daughter is just turned thirteen, and my son is eleven. I am experiencing adolescence for the first time, which is a very exciting and interesting time in my life. Professionally, I am a social worker. I have worked for the Department of Children and Families for twenty years, and so I have spent my life advocating for children and families and understanding how it is to work for a government agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette, and then over to Noberto.
Thank you. Again, The Record Journal and the viewers watching. This election comes down to public, public safety in our thing. You believe in a strong public safety, you must. I'm. All right, my name is Noberto Gonzalez, and I'm a long-life resident here, and I own a small business here in Meriden for the last twenty-seven years. I'm currently a member of the Knights of Columbus, active in, in part of the Meriden Children's Person Initiative, where I completed a PEP program. I'm running for the city council because I believe in order to have a prosperous city that is capable of drawing new residents, businesses, you must have a council that believes in the public safety first. Our current councils auctions are trying to push the CRB on the city of huge stepping in wrong direction. I believe that Meriden needs to use this COVID relief fund to invest more in our community, our crumbling roads and sidewalks. We must increase our code of reference and enforcement to regard the blight, blight properties, most of which are absentee landlords that are not taking care of these buildings and houses. I mean, we need a new vision and new voice, and which is why I'm humbly asking people for Noberto Gonzalez on November 6th. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Noberto, and then we'll bring in Record Journal reporter Mary Ellen Godin. We'll start asking the questions, and since Yvette went first for the opening statements, we go to Noberto to answer the first question.
Okay, thank you both for coming tonight. Noberto, Area 1 has the largest population of underserved residents and children who live in poverty, lack opportunities, and access or training for well-paying jobs. As a city councillor representing this population, how do you intend to address the unique challenges and the opportunities in this district?
Well, with the COVID relief money that we got in from the state, for the state, we should spend that money on, on mostly on the education. It's, or it needs to go to teachers. I see that teachers are spending a lot of their money for their, their, their classrooms, and this doesn't need to happen that way.
All right, and then over to Yvette.
So absolutely, one, absolutely, Area 1 has the most unrepresented population in the entire city. It's actually the reason that I'm running. I do believe strongly that we need more strong representation for Area 1. Our, as Mr. Gonzalez said, our schools need stronger representation. Our youth need more support, as he said, but it doesn't go, it doesn't stop there. It extends beyond. It extends as Mr. Gonzalez has talked about, to public safety and needing to ensure that our public safety is, is fair and is safe, and that they're adequately supported in order to combat the crime that exists in our area that is unique to other parts of the city. In addition to that, you know, as the finance chair, I have advocated and fought for additional funding to be allocated toward our community. As the Chair of the ARPA Committee, I have really pushed to make sure that the money is used as was intended towards the most unrepresented parts of our community.
All right, Mary Ellen, and the next question, Yvette first.
I was struggling to unmute. Last month, the council approved capping the number of recreational cannabis dispensaries permitted in the city at three. Can you please share your views on recreational marijuana, now that it's legal in Connecticut, and how to regulate the establishment that will sell those products? Do you agree with the local regulations the council approved last month? Do you agree or just disagree that a dispenser would be an asset downtown?
That's a lot of questions. So I'll start by saying that I sit on the Economic Development Committee, and I did vote in favor of limiting to three recreational facilities for marijuana. I believe that the revenue and the tax revenue from the dispensaries, I'm sorry, from the recreational stores are going to be used for really, I think we need to be very targeted. We need to be very planful about how we're going to use these revenues. I think that we need to invest in our education. We need to use some of this money for children. We need to use some of this money for prevention and for education. The last thing we want to do is for this marijuana to be legal, and our children not have the education that they need regarding the dangers of substance misuse. So I think very similar to the package stores, alcohol stores in Meriden, they need to be regulated. They need to be controlled, and we also need to honor and acknowledge the law, which is marijuana is now legal in the state of Connecticut.
All right, and then over to Noberto for your answer.
Yes, I agree with Cortez of regulations on that, on that part. For my sake, I wouldn't think it'd be a good idea to have it down in, in the downtown area. For the fact that it's, it's there to senior center and just not a good location. Maybe then I'm the outskirts of Meriden, like east or the west side, further out. What the revenue that's going to bring, yes, it'll bring revenue to the city, but it's, it's gonna be really controlled of what they're doing here. Where you might have people buying it for minors, and you know, if that starts to happen, then who knows, it will help us, you know, on that aspect of the business. So it's just like, like you said, it's like alcohol, tobacco, it's all gotta be regulated and watched for. Thank you.
Crime in the inner city has increased in recent years with police and the public having to face calls of shootings and other violence, in addition to car thefts and convenience store holdups. While not unique to Meriden, what resources do the police need to tackle these crimes, protect the citizens who live and work downtown?
It's when we go to Noberto first.
Well, speaking of that, I was, I had experience of Carter being stolen right in front of my house in gun violence. Awesome. We do, well, we gotta, let us support our police, one thing, you know, and public safety is a big issue. We don't have public safety, we're gonna have, have a lot of police that, you know, just not gonna follow the, the, well, they're, they're gonna follow, but they're, they're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna be short of that. Then, you know, how could we combat crime? I mean, crime is everywhere. There's no way we can take that away from the city. There's always gonna be crime regardless. Fighting that or trying to, you know, do something about it? It's just in every corner of the city. You're always gonna fight it.
All right, and then over to Yvette.
Thank you. So I completely agree in the need to support our police and in the need for public safety. I have talked several times with Chief Rosado. One of the things that he and I both agree on is the need for more community policing. It's something that I fully support, and I have let him know that any time that he needs more resources, he needs to come to the Finance Committee. As the Chair of Finance and a member, I have approved and voted in favor of every request made by all of our public safety. Anytime someone has come forth with the need to further their ability to be able to provide safety to our city, I have supported it in every way. I also support the upcoming 988 number, which is going to increase social work involvement in crisis situations that will free the police up to be able to manage more criminal behaviors. They are not, they should not be responsible for managing, managing the mental health crisis. The police need to be supported so that they can do the best job possible to support and keep our community safe.
Okay, I guess this is back to Yvette. There has been some talk in other forums about the need to renovate or relocate the senior center away from its current location to offer more programs and outdoor amenities. Does that location serve city seniors who don't have transportation, or can it be moved elsewhere? Do you support relocating the senior center, and if so, should it remain downtown?
So I'll start by saying that I fully support our Director Crown, and I think she's done an amazing job during the pandemic, but very specifically with our seniors. And I would support any plan that she would bring forward to provide more support and services for our seniors. I agree with everybody that the current location is, you know, not ideal for our seniors. I think that I would really support a different place that offered some kind of outdoor, outdoor space for them, have in my mind a mindfulness garden where they could walk through and maybe plant. We have other community organizations who want to expand their gardening centers, and I think that that could be a really great activity for them. We also have to remember that the pandemic isn't over, and that safety has to come first, and we need to make sure that our seniors are safe, and we also need to plan for their future and for their well-being, and I would absolutely support. We can use our ARPA money. So any, anyone who wants to bring forth an application for a community center, it's something that I would definitely support.
All right, and then over to Noberto.
Yes, the senior center, well, one hundred percent. In, in, in favor of moving that senior center, that's the location thing. I mean, it's, it's long overdue for, to, to have their own location. Being in downtown areas, kind of like, you know, it's, it's rough. Getting in and out of the, out of the buses, it's very dangerous for them to be in that location. I really consider moving that location to the green, by the, by the green, where the old mills used to be, that parcel there, with their own building, their own parking lot. They would have their own little courtyard ambiance and stuff like that. I think it would be a lot better there in that, that area than where they're at now. As you see, they have to cross the street to where they're at now and over, versus the one over here on the mill, they have the green, and any activities that are going on in the green, they can just walk right over. THC is over there.
All right, that's a fun time.
Okay, Noberto, what will be your priorities in the upcoming council term? What will be your priorities in the upcoming council term?
Well, my priorities would be to, well, was this, as I said before, we need to fix our roads, our sidewalks. There are, there are a lot of needs of repairing, getting more businesses to the area, introducing more businesses to the area. I see a lot of people that they, they wanna go out and eat. Where do they go? They go out to Southernton, they go out to Wallingford. They leave Meriden. We need to bring them businesses here where they can, actually, where you want the outside coming in instead of us going out. That's, you know, economic growth is what I'm focusing on. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Yvette.
Thank you. I'll echo what Mr. Gonzalez said about economic growth. I think that I, I know that that will be one of my top priorities. I believe that we need to invest in the small businesses that we have here. We have a lot of mom and pop shops, especially down in our Area 1 here, and, you know, I see our responsibility in the city as needing to support them, to help them grow so that they can last generations. And beyond economic development, you know, continuing to balance physically responsible budget to use the surplus that we are anticipating and the current ARPA dollars to continue to invest in our community. We can use this as a one-time handout, or we can use it as an investment, and our goal in the creation of the committee and our process is in place right now, or so that we can use this as an investment to continue to grow our city. I also want to make sure that our seniors and our children, that they're taken care of, that our veterans are not forgotten, as they too often are, and there's a lot more, but I'm running out of time.
Okay, economic development piggybacks into this next question. Despite millions of dollars in infrastructure, train station, flood control investments downtown, economic growth continues to lag behind other parts of the city. Should the city consider assisting some of the downtown property owners to either fix up or fit up their properties to spur economic development?
And now go to Yvette first.
Yes. The city should absolutely support our small businesses in downtown. We should support them financially as a city, as a community, too. We also have a responsibility to help our community grow, and so we need to, to shop downtown. We need to eat downtown as community. We need to support those businesses as well. But in terms of economic development, our small businesses are critical. In addition, economic development extends beyond just small businesses. Our roads, our infrastructure, our sidewalks, nobody wants to come eat at a restaurant where you're gonna trip over a sidewalk as you're walking, or there's no parking, or your car is gonna get a pop hole. People want to grow in a city where our infrastructure is solid, where they know, of course, that there's not going to be flooding. We need to continue the work that we've already been, the great work that we've already been doing. We have a flood control committee who's working really hard to make sure that these issues are resolved. It's going to take some time, but it is absolutely something that we will achieve and we will accomplish.
All right, and then over to Noberto.
I wanna echo that for, for Cortez, what she said. Absolutely. We do, we do need to bring our restaurants and small businesses back up and running. I mean, there's a lot of them that got hit with the COVID and wasn't able to survive. I, I was fortunately, that I was myself as a business owner, was able to hang in there in, with help with some funds that I got. I mean, we need to help our neighboring businesses also that, that would need the help that they didn't know about or was, you know, not informed. The roads and the potholes, and as she said, we, we gotta, we gotta fix all these roads, you know, and make it, make it, so when people come to our town, you know, they got something to talk about. Besides, they talk about Harbor Park and all that, we gotta make our central downtown area a place to talk about. I mean, we have a nice train station. We got people coming through the train station and looking at our town, we got the, they can see the green. But we wanted to get off and, and enjoy and see what we have to offer.
All right, next time.
Okay, next question. The city of Meriden has already received a portion of more than thirty-six point three million in federal funds through the American Rescue Plan Act in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Those funds have stipulations attached. They must be used in one of five categories, supporting public health expenditures, addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, investing in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers, and replacing lost public sector revenue. A committee tasked with recommended use of funds has begun reviewing applications for proposed initiatives that would be funded through ARP. What types of initiatives would you prioritize?
That goes to Noberto first.
Thank you. Okay, um, well, I would start really from working our way outside in toward downtown, using that money from the east to the west side, starting with getting businesses in there, getting our, our roads and our sidewalk cleared. So when people come in, you know, just build the economic growth into, from, from like, let's say, Lowe's all the way down to Broad Street, get that all, well, work in and then work our way into this in center of town, and then the opposite side also, from the west side, working our way in. Getting buildings refurbished, getting these empty lots filled with at least some new housing. I know there's a lot of land that's, that they tore down to the houses and they have some plain, empty. I mean, we can build some houses on there and get some revenues from there from the taxes. Get them started up, you know, first-time home buyers, and give them the chance to start a small business and building houses or building, or whatever it shall be.
All right, and then over to Yvette.
So I'm fortunate enough right now to be the Chair of the ARPA Committee, and so as you said, we have thirty-six million dollars to invest in our community. What I will say just to begin is that the city of Meriden decided, the council body decided that we wanted to make sure that the distribution of these funds was fair, equitable, and transparent. And so the purpose of the ARPA Committee is to make sure that all of our decisions are made publicly, that a community has the opportunity to ask questions, to weigh in, but most importantly, that they have access to the funding. And so in terms of priorities, what I have done is I've set a priority that we will identify with, that we have identified areas that we're gonna invest in. We are setting up a structure. You know, what we know from the guidance is it's intended to be used to the populations who were most harmed by COVID. And we know that that is seniors. We know that is our youth, and we know that those, that they are those living in low-income areas of our town. And that is where I believe the money needs to be invested.
What is your assessment of the city's handling of the COVID-19 pandemic? How has it performed in the areas of providing access to public health and access to city government during the crisis? In your view, has the city struck an appropriate balance between managing a public health crisis and ensuring residents are able to access their city government? Yvette, to that first.
So I can't say enough about Director Crown and her team and their response to this pandemic. They have led courageously, and every single step of the way, they have kept the community's best interests at heart. We are currently in the orange status, which means we are doing better than we have been. We are in the process of prepping for a max vaccination, vaccination for our five to eleven-year-olds. We know that what we have done is everything within our power to protect the most vulnerable, our seniors, our children. We've made really difficult decisions. However, during the senior center, we had Leah and her team driving around town, delivering little gift packages to seniors, trying to keep them engaged so that they weren't home alone. Yes, we did have to close, but the city, I'm sorry, the city did not close. We did have to not allow as much public action or an interaction, but we always maintained an operable city so that the needs of the community would always be met.
All right, and then over to Noberto.
Yes, I'm gonna echo on that, Cortez, on now what she said about the city health department. They did an awesome job. They did a really great job on continuing the COVID-19 epidemic. I, for instance, experienced what, how they worked and what we had to do in our business, keeping a six-feet distance and putting the plastics up and, and sanitizing. They did a wonderful job. I mean, I just let the science do the work there, you know. It, it, and we didn't have big numbers here in Meriden, and I'm pretty happy about that with the COVID-19. Yes, we had some fatalities and, and, but, you know, that, that came along. We were expecting that. But besides what the health department did, we did an awesome job.
All right, and then over on Facebook, we had a question come up about the notion of the civilian review board. So in the upcoming term, what are the first action items the council will be taking up as a vote regarding establishing a civilian review board to review their department's handling of incidents involving police use of force and other alleged misconduct? If you are elected and this item comes before you, how would you vote? Do you believe the current internal review process is adequate or inadequate? An additional oversight is necessary. I believe this goes to Noberto first.
Okay, and the CRB, yeah, that's in there, but I'm one hundred percent against that. There's no need for that CRB review board. There's no evidence of use of police, of, of force abuse. If there is, they were dropped due to the cameras that the, the police carry on them. That alone shows a lot right there, what they're doing and, and how they're doing and performing their job. They're trained, fully trained, and they don't need a review board to show them how to do their job. They, they know what they're doing.
All right, and then over to Yvette.
So I have been very public about the fact that I do in fact support a civilian review board. I would like to make sure that I can clear up any misconception. I am an advocate for the police. I support our police. I support the need for our police to have the resources that they need to keep us safe, to do their job, to keep themselves safe in really dangerous situations. I supported, unlike my colleagues, my Republican colleagues at our committee meeting, the contracts, the union contracts that gave them a raise. There was pushback for the police for all the sacrifices that they have made so far. There was pushback of whether or not they deserved a fair and just raise. That is not something that I question. That is something that I fully, fully support. As a public worker myself, I have been subject to the scrutiny of outside agencies. I worked for the Department of Children and Families, and although it's been uncomfortable at times, if I were one of those mothers, I absolutely would want the right to review the work that I did and that somebody else did that pertained to me and my family and my children. I believe that the public safety should also be held accountable to the same amount of transparency.
I think, is that you wanted to show time on that?
Everyone on that.
Yeah, yeah, you can have an additional thirty seconds.
Thank you. Well, since she supports that CRB, then we should have a review board for all public safety and, and a review on all of them. I'm, I'm talking about firemen, police, ambulance, all the, even on us, on our. Ambulance, all the, even on us, on the, on the council, and people that work in city hall, they all need a review board then. If she's, thank you.
That, did you want to respond back?
Please, please. I agree. I think the entire city should be held to an equal amount of transparency. I do not think that any department under this city should be excluded from needing to be transparent in the work that we do. Again, as Finance Chair, we have the ARPA money. It's not dispersed behind closed doors like some of these other towns are doing. That's not what's happening. We're doing it in the community. We're doing it in front of everyone so that everyone can see how these dollars are spent. Transparency must occur across every department.
And with that, we're up on the 30 minutes. We'll head into the closing statements and since that fielded the last question first, you can start with your closing statement.
Thank you. So as I've talked about, I've been an active member of City Council, proudly representing Area One. You know, I am, the only reason that I am here right now is because Area One is the town that is the area that I live in. It is the most underrepresented. It's the most disadvantaged, and it's the community that requires the strongest, most fervent support on our city council right now. I know that I have what it takes to do it. I've been doing it. I have helped to balance the budget. I am professionally trained to manage multimillion-dollar contracts to a standard of the federal government where they scrutinize the work that I do. I am scrutinized and transparent in my professional work. I have been transparent in my council work, and I will continue to do so. I will support our community in every way possible, and I will work really hard, as I have been, to make Meriden the best city possible, not just for the community, for my children, for my family. I intend to live and grow older in the city, and I want it to be a great place. So please, everyone, don't forget to come out and vote on November 2nd, and I humbly ask for your support.
Then over to Noberto for your closing statement.
Thank you. And once again, to the record, I want to thank you, when the viewers watching also. This election comes down to public safety and our seniors. If you believe in a strong public safety, you must vote Republican. If you believe in like our families and the community deserves, the police force that is not handcuffed or by the city council by implementing useless CRBs, then you must vote Republican. If you believe that our seniors have helped build Meriden, deserve a new senior center that is fitting their great sacrifices over the years, then you must vote Republican. Once again, the entire Republican slate in our running to make sure that the police officers are protected and seniors are thanked. We again ask humbly for your support on November 2nd.
All right, now, thank, thank both of the candidates for being here today. It's important for, you know, any, any voters to be able to hear directly from the candidates when they're trying to make the decisions about and who to vote for. And being able to hear directly from the candidates goes a long way in making that happen. So, thanks again for both of you being here, and thanks for everyone for viewing in and make sure to vote and vote for the coming election.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for having me.